Good evening. Let me call to order the Bristol, Tennessee City Council meeting of December 1, 2020. Tara, would you please call the roll?
Yes, sir. Luttrell?
Here.
Turner?
Yes.
Fire Robin?
Here.
King?
Here.
Powers?
Here.
I would like to welcome everyone and thank you for participating in tonight's meeting. Your interest in city government is appreciated. Please be patient with us this evening as we continue our utilization of an electronic platform for tonight's meeting. As is our practice, there will be an opportunity to speak on matters of city business this evening during the Appearance of Citizens section of the agenda. Instructions for participating in tonight's meeting is provided on the scrolling message at the bottom of your viewing screen. This evening, I would like to ask Reverend Dan Gray, pastor of Adlin United Methodist Church, lead us our invocation. And following our invocation, I'd like to ask Mr. Rush Powers to lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance. Pastor?
Thank you, Mayor. Let us pray. Lord God, you speak and we are created. You love and we are redeemed. You breathe and we are sustained. Come and speak and love and breathe upon us, for we are a tired and weary and fragmented people, too often trusting in our own self-interest and yet fearing our own inadequacies. We pray that your Spirit is present in this gathering of city leaders, present in their daily lives and present in all of our hearts and minds. Provide them with your empathy and compassion to hear the cries of the needy and those desperate for justice and fairness. Among the challenges in a community pierced by the COVID pandemic, grant them your wisdom to make sound choices for our common good. Give them your knowledge to discern truth and to know that it comes from you. Empower them with your gracious and disruptive courage to do what is right, even when it is not popular. Use them to bless the people of this community and help us thrive in your abundant life, joy, and peace. We pray your protection and blessing on them and their families. God, help us love you better with all our heart, mind, soul, and strength, and help us selflessly and sacrificially love our neighbors in our words and thoughts and feelings and in our deeds and actions and the ways that we live as individuals and as a society in a shared community called Bristol. We ask a lot, God. Teach us to humbly listen to you. You are our hope. We trust your grace in all things. Jesus Christ, Son of God, have mercy on us. In your name we pray. Amen.
Amen.
Place your hand on your heart, please. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. At this time, I'd like to ask Ms. Danielle Smith, City Attorney, to discuss the statutory authority for conducting this meeting by electronic means. Ms. Smith?
Thank you, Mayor. As you know by now, Governor Lee has suspended the provisions of the Open Meetings Act to the extent necessary to allow governing bodies such as the City Council to conduct their essential business by electronic means rather than in person. One condition of meeting electronically is that if you're attending by audio only, you're asked to identify yourself by name and position so that the public can hear and understand who's speaking. In order to proceed with meeting electronically, City Council should make a determination that meeting electronically is necessary to protect the health, safety, and welfare of Tennesseans in light of the COVID-19 outbreak. If necessary, members should discuss at this time whether that is necessary. If it's not necessary, then for discussion, if discussion is not necessary, then the member should proceed to a roll call vote to determine whether meeting is necessary.
Okay, to hear a motion?
Motion to approve.
Second.
Tara, please call the roll.
Luttrell?
Yes.
Turner?
Yes.
Fire Robin?
Uh, yes.
King?
Yes.
Powers?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Sora, do you have any items to be added to the agenda?
No, Mayor, the agenda is complete.
Okay, we'll move on. We have two items of recognition on tonight's agenda. Mr. Sora, do you like to walk us through those?
So be glad to. First, we've got, we'd like to celebrate the re-accreditation of our police department by the Commission on Accreditation for Law Enforcement Agencies, better known as CALEA. This nationally recognized accreditation organization spent countless hours during the past year reviewing our department's general orders, including use of force policies, pursuit policies, and community policing programs to ensure our compliance with the highest of law enforcement standards of conduct. In our society, law enforcement professionals are constantly facing new challenges in which they must be prepared to meet. We're very proud of our police department as they have consistently strived for professional excellence in the service to our community. At this time, I'd like to ask Chief Wade to address council on the significance of this achievement.
I'm not sure he's on.
He was on.
Yeah.
I know, yeah, I know he was in his office and he was on shortly before we started. Let me say just a few words then, and hopefully Blaine will join us. CALEA is, this is the eighth go-round, so to speak, of accreditation of our police department. And this was, this was something that was, that was started under Chief Eddie Wampler a number of years ago, back in the early to mid 1990s. But it's, it's very appropriate, especially in today's world with the scrutiny on, on law enforcement agencies. Not every community has a certified law enforcement department. Bristol's very fortunate in that not only do we have the National CALEA Certification, but we're also state certified, as, as this council was made aware of earlier this year. And it's, it's through these types of professional review, peer review, that excellence in law enforcement practices, it's, 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 it's known in the community and it's a standard of conduct that, that our police department expects of each and every member. And I don't think you can overstate the value of that type of commitment. Has Chief Wade joined us?
I have. My computer's updating. It's getting ready to update automatically again. But the only thing that I can really add is the support of the City Council and the city manager for the past 25 years has allowed the police department.
I believe we've lost him again, Mayor.
Yeah, I believe we went into his update.
Okay.
Okay, you'll move on to Bristol First Awards.
Just be glad to. You know, typically, we have recognized our employees or recipients of the Bristol First Award at, at, at real city council meetings, not the virtual ones. And, and very often, we'll have, you know, as many as 10 to 12 individuals that receive this award over the course of the year. This award was started maybe a half a dozen years ago to recognize those employees that go that extra mile for citizens in our community. And it's, it's, you have to be recommended, or it's usually a citizen that will, that will send a letter in or some sort of communication that talks about an employee that's gone the extra mile. This year, it's been different in trying to recognize those employees. But those employees, we've still had those employees throughout the COVID year that have gone that extra mile. We want to take this opportunity to recognize them. We did this in a virus-safe environment. On November the 18th, these individuals were recognized in the gymnasium at Slater Center. They received their reward or their awards. They didn't get their luncheon, and they will get that when it's safe to get back in the water. But at this time, John Luttrell, our Community Relations Director, will, will list those individuals that are recipients of the award this year and, and, and the, the action that they took that distinguished them from other, from our other employees and made them deserving of this recognition. John?
Thank you, Mr. Sora and members of council. Prior, prior to November of this year, 45 employees had been, in total, had been recognized for their achievements, their special contributions, and dedication to public service since the Bristol First Awards were first established back in October of 2014. These awards were originally established to recognize city employees for their service to the public, for leadership, service to other city employees, efficiency, creativity, and inventiveness. Those nominations, they're accepted from city employees, elected officials, and community members throughout the year. As Mr. Sora mentioned, the, the awards are typically presented during your monthly business meeting. But due to the electronic nature that we've been under for most of this year, we decided not to include those recognitions as agenda items until the recipients could be properly recognized in person. So, we did have a, a small ceremony on November 18th with Mayor Luttrell and Mr. Sora, along with, with Chief Wade and Mr. Tim Beavers as the heads of the departments that our nominees serve in. At that ceremony, the total number of recipients of this award rose from 45 to 51. So with that, at this time, I'll briefly recap the circumstances surrounding each nomination. First, in June of this year, we received a communication from a local pastor of a congregation on Virginia Avenue. He described the unfortunate circumstances in which a member of his church was found to have passed away from natural causes on the porch of her home. The reverend made specific note of the exemplary level of compassion, respect, and professionalism that the responding officers exhibited, certainly in their investigation, but more specifically in the manner in which they expressed care and concern for that individual's family members who soon arrived on the scene. He commended this group of officers as outstanding representatives of the Bristol, Tennessee Police Department and the City of Bristol, Tennessee. They are Officer Frederick Gold, Officer Kevin Frederick, and Detective Chris Odell. Officer Gold was unable to attend the ceremony, but he will be presented with his award at our earliest opportunity. I should also note that just over a month prior to the incident described in that nomination, we received a separate commendation from a community member regarding Officer Kevin Frederick. And I'll now read directly from her submission. "On Thursday, May 14th, 2020, I was in the police department parking lot. I saw a person, obviously homeless, trying to get into the building. He did not have any shoes on his feet and was walking with a limp. Officer Frederick approached him and after talking with him for a few minutes, went to the trunk of his car and dug through it until he found the man a pair of shoes. Officer Frederick later told me he kept the shoes in his trunk in case his boots got wet, and it was no big deal. I beg to differ. It wasn't just the giving of the shoes, it was the way he talked to the man, showing him respect and treating him as I would expect our police officers to treat everyone they come into contact with. I think he showed great compassion and empathy in providing the shoes and trying to find somewhere for the man to spend the night. Many of us in the public run the other way when we see these people. All of them have a story, and regardless of the circumstances which landed them in their current predicament, they are still human and deserve respect. If I were the chief of police, I could not have scripted this interaction any better. Officer Frederick is a great representative of, of the police department and the city of Bristol and deserves some recognition for his good deed, no matter how inconsequential he feels it to be. The, the trophy presented to Officer Frederick clearly represents a great deal of gratitude from this community, which, which does go a very long way toward developing strong relationships and goodwill between Bristol citizens and our police department. The next nomination was received during the week following the Fourth of July from one of our downtown business owners who wanted to express his immense gratitude and appreciation to one of our city staff members whose actions helped avoid a potentially costly situation. His message reads, "I just wanted to thank your street sweepers who found my bank deposit bag Monday night. I must have driven off with it on the roof of my car. It is comforting to be, to be reassured about the great community we live in. I certainly appreciate your people and everything was accounted for." Bag was found about a half block away from this individual's place of business, and our team member promptly turned it over to the police department so that it could be returned to its very, very thankful owner. And that outstanding staff member was Mr. Larry Modern. The final nomination for, for this, this round of awards was received in August and was actually submitted by one of our own police officers. The nominating officer had been contacted by a community member regarding her son Timmy, who happened to have a birthday coming up. Her request was simple, perhaps seeing if a few officers might be able to just drive by the house that day. A group text was sent out, and the officers on shift, as well as some members of our fire department from Station 3, all eagerly expressed their willingness to participate. Two officers, however, took it a step further. Upon gathering to make the trip by the young man's house, it was learned that these two officers were not only participating in the drive-by, but they had also purchased a birthday gift and a card for Timmy. Further, they had gathered the baseball cards from each of the officers to include in the birthday card. The nomination goes on to say, "For all of us on shift that day, it was a simple gesture that we all enjoyed. But I feel these two officers went above and beyond with the gifts that they, that they stopped and presented to him. I honestly thought we would just have a few cars drive by, but, but Tiana and Chesney made this an experience Timmy will always remember. So, we also congratulate Officers Tiana Macias and Chesney Rourke. We know there's not a single person employed by the city that does what they do for accolades and awards, but it is the least we can do to express our appreciation for the positive impacts they do make every day in the lives of the members of this community. All of these individuals are now in the running for our annual overall Bristol First Employee Recognition, the winners of which get an additional day of vacation. So, as Mr. Sora mentioned, we normally do announce that winner at a luncheon in, in January or February, but there's still some things to be determined, so stay tuned for those details. But thank you all again."
Thank you. We have no presentations on this evening's agenda, so we'll move on to our public hearings. We have one public hearing on tonight's agenda. The public hearing is hereby open to receive public comment on ordinance 20-16, which amends the city zoning map as it relates to property located at 1741 and 1745 King College Road. Mr. Sora, would you please summarize this matter for the public?
Yes, Mayor, be glad to. We're conducting this public hearing in advance of consideration on second reading later this evening for the proposed rezoning of 1741 and 1745 King College Road. As council is aware, staff received an application for the rezoning of 1745 King College Road, which is the, the property that is the former site of the Cornerstone Chapel. The request for the rezoning from R3 multifamily residential to B1B neighborhood shopping and commercial district. This property at 1745 King College Road encompasses 2.81 acres. During staff's research of the adjacent properties, it was noted that 1741, which is immediately west of 1745, had a split zoning designation of R3 and B1B. Staff approached the, the owner of the property regarding the .16 acres that was currently zoned R3. And through the conversation with the owner, it was determined that they also would desire to have that small portion of that split zone property rezoned to B1B. This matter was favorably approved by City Council on first reading during the November 10th meeting and is also the subject of further discussion during our work session on November 26th, 26th, 24th, whenever. And it was also approved and recommended with an unanimous favorable recommendation by our Planning Commission from their October 19th meeting. Sherith Young is with us this evening, our Planning Services Manager, to further detail this annexation. She'll, she'll provide that, and then, Mayor, it would be appropriate to open the floor up then for questions from, from the audience and, and public comment.
Sherith?
Thank you, Mr. Sora. Good evening, Mayor Luttrell and City Council members. I'll begin my comments of the public hearing item with the location map of the properties under consideration for rezoning. Here you have outlined in red the two parcels that are under consideration tonight. The, the triangular piece, the smaller piece is here. It's .16 acres. That is the parcel that is split zoned, and then the parcel beside is the former home of the Cornerstone Church. And that is the parcel that is approximately 2.81 acres. The next slide shows, I'll just show a quick, couple of quick photos. This is a slide looking, this is looking at that triangular piece of property in front of the residential home. So this is the triangular, smaller piece of property. And then the next slide will show, this is standing right in front of the Cornerstone Church. So standing on King College, looking at church property. The next map shows the existing zoning map. So, anything here in orange is currently zoned R3. So the triangle and the, the larger cornerstone parcel are both zoned B3. And then on King College Road, you can see that there is some B1B along the corridor on that same side of the street. It also has some R1A in the area, both back in behind the parcels in the neighborhood and then on the other side of King College Road. Sherith, I don't think your share screen is working. Oh, okay. Uh-oh. Let's see. The slide that we should be seeing has a, it's just zoning map and parcels, orange, yellow, and purple.
That's where you are. You're there, Sherith.
Everybody there?
Okay. I, I can see it.
Okay.
Can you see it, Ms. Powers?
I got it.
Okay. Okay, great.
Use your. Okay. Move, moving on to the future land use map on the next slide. So this is, again, outlining those same parcels. And the information overlay here is the future land use map. So along the King College corridor, you have a neighborhood commercial land use designation. And then you have some higher density residential, which is kind of an orange shade, and then a low density residential in yellow. So the future land use map does show neighborhood commercial in this corridor and B1B, the B1B zone does align nicely with that land use classification. The next two slides just show a summary of the permitted uses in both zones. So here are the R3 permitted uses and special use permit land use, land uses. So you have as permitted uses multifamily, developments, cemeteries, farming, public parks, duplex developments, public libraries, bed and breakfasts. For special use permits, you have items like churches, daycare centers, hospitals, golf, swim, tennis clubs, and assisted living facilities. Once we get to the B1B zone, it does expand to use, to list some of the business uses that would serve a neighborhood. So that it's not as expansive as our B3 zone or highway commercial zones, but it does include items such as retail trade establishments, some professional business offices, some limited healthcare uses, and then some religious civic professional organizations, things like that in the B1B zone. The special use permit list is the exact same as the R3 zone. So that is, that is going to be the same list of uses that someone could request a special use permit for. Public notification signs were placed on this property, which shared information about the meeting date, location, and contact number for more information. We did, we did notify adjacent property owners of the request, and we included in their letter a comment form which they could return to us. As of today, we have not received any opposition on this request. So that is the public notification information. We did also place an ad in the newspaper. So we did notify that the public, public hearing is occurring tonight in the, in the Bristol Herald Courier. The recommendation to Planning Commission was due to the B1B zoning on adjacent parcels in agreement with the policies of the Future Land Use Plan and Policy. Staff recommendation was for City Council to approve the rezoning. As Mr. Sora stated in his introduction, at the, at the meeting on October 19th, the Planning Commission did vote unanimously to forward a favorable recommendation to City Council on this request. With that, I'd be happy to answer any questions that you all might have.
Just a comment, as stated within our work session, I did go by the property, asked that the Planning Department reposition signs for better visibility of it. They did that. I went and, and hot, kind of hiked the property. It does have good buffering all the way around it. My concern was it went kind of deep into the neighborhood, but feel that this is good for that area, and it does agree with the, as Sheriff mentioned, the future land use and the B1B zoning. And also spoke to the future owners of property and felt really good about the, the business that was, I should say, business. The Sheriff. The Sheriff, exactly, Sheriff, exactly, what is it called, Sunny, what is it called, Sunny? Can't remember the name of the. At any rate, it looked like it was going to be a good place for their facility to go.
Mayor, I think we have a couple of individuals that desire to participate in the public hearing section tonight, and I suspect they're waiting for their cue to offer their comments.
Okay.
And that was Sunny Path Counseling.
Okay, the first individual we have is Ms. Laura Marderano. And Ms. Marderano, can you hear us? It may take a moment to get her phone line unmuted. Ms. Marderano, we still do not hear you in the meeting. You should be able to press star six on your phone to be unmuted in the Zoom. Ms. Marderano, we're still unable to hear you.
Shane or John, can we tell if there is a delay in their ability to pick up as to where we are in our meeting?
They're actually live here with us right now. Okay, we'll give that one just a moment. Let's go ahead and go to the next individual calling for this. This particular call, it's Mr. Walter Flynn. Mr. Flynn, if you will press star six on your phone to unmute and join us. Mr. Flynn, are you there with us?
Yes, I am.
All right, if you will please state.
Are you able to hear me?
Yes, sir.
My name is Walter Flynn. I serve as trustee for Cornerstone Chapel and am also the property caretaker. My address is 21217 Ebony Lane in Abingdon, Virginia. Now, thank you for the opportunity to speak. I would like to first speak on behalf of Cornerstone Chapel Church, then about this rezoning request, and finally about this opportunity for a Christian children's counseling center. It is unfortunate for a church that has served our community to close. This, however, is not uncommon in biblical history. I am reminded that the building is not the church, but the people that worship there. So in God's cup of providence, they have been dispersed, and the property is being repurposed as a Christian children's counseling center. Ministry to children has been the heart and mission of our church. Sunny Path will carry on this work. After waiting on God for over a year, it is with gratitude to God for our ministry to children to continue through this children's counseling center. This wait is also not incidental. During that time, we believe that God was guiding Sunny Path to success to venture this new location. It is with this repurposing of this property that brings this rezoning request to you. It is also providential that this rezoning just so happens to fulfill the planning and zoning plans for this area. Understanding that your concerns should be restricted only to the rezoning use of the property rather than the initial use, hopefully, this initial use will continue and become a landmark to this neighborhood. I have provided input to you that validates this to be a most desirable location for this counseling and training center. It is also an asset to the Planning and Development Office for storm drainage considerations. Through their building and zoning code restrictions, the neighbors and counseling center will be protected for privacy. Finally, this counseling center provides a vital and desperately needed service to this city and surrounding areas. Their success is important to all of us. At the present time, they are at capacity, turning away clients. Most of their remuneration comes from insurance coverage. Unfortunately, there are children that do not have this coverage and have to be turned away for lack of funding to provide these services to them. There is a need for sponsorship of these unfortunate children. I hope to be one of those sponsors and would encourage others to understand this need and find ways to accommodate their needs. Thank you for listening. Are there any questions for me?
Okay. John, let's see if we can get the other participant line back up.
Yes, we should have Ms. Marderano on the line here.
Hello, can you all hear me?
Yes, we can. If you will please state your name and address for the record.
My name is Laura Marderano, and my address is 116 Fox Hall Circle in Bristol, Tennessee. Good evening, and thank you all for the opportunity to speak to you tonight to share some information about my business, as well as answer any questions you all might have for me regarding my intentions for the use of 1745 King College Road. I am the owner of Sunny Path Counseling, a private practice group that specializes in mental health counseling for children, adolescents, and families. We provide one-hour weekly sessions in which we work one-on-one with the family or the individual child, teaching coping skills and helping kids learn to recognize and regulate their emotions. As I mentioned in my presentation I sent via email last month, Tennessee ranks last in our country for access to mental health care for youth. I started Sunny Path Counseling to address this need with the vision of improving the mental health of our local community through early intervention and by providing access to quality, specialized mental health care for youth. Due to COVID-19, we have seen an unprecedented demand for mental health services, especially for our youth. We have reached full capacity at our Johnson City location and currently have a running waiting list for services. We started looking to expand into the tri-cities, and we are attracted to this property and its location on King College Road. We love that it has a safe, private neighborhood setting with outdoor land use. We're excited about the possibility to serve the Bristol, Tennessee area, and we anticipate with this new location, we would be able to hire up to six additional therapists and serve twice the amount of families. Please let me know if you have any additional questions or concerns, and thank you again for your consideration.
Okay, is there anyone else waiting?
That is all we currently have.
Okay, see, and then this public hearing is hereby closed. This brings us to the Appearance of Citizens section of our agenda. This section provides an opportunity for the public to address City Council. Comments are limited to matters of city business only. A response will not like to be made at this time, since in most cases, neither the council nor the city manager will be prepared to effectively respond to the concern. The city manager will look into the matter and report back to City Council or, as appropriate, have staff meet with you in an effort to satisfy your concern. Comments are limited to three minutes per individual and are non-transferable to other individuals. Groups are encouraged to select a spokesperson to represent them. If you'd like to participate in this evening's Appearance of Citizens section of our agenda, please follow the instructions scrolling at the bottom of your viewing screen.
I have a question. Were these ordinances, was this from Planning Commission? Is this what you're referring to?
There was one, the first one was the zoning issue that was just brought up for public hearing. The second one, I believe, was another zoning issue that regarded right-of-way on someone's property. And then the last four, I believe, were all on a few different ordinances. One, I believe, related to the delivery of alcohol with certain online purchases.
I can speak to that, Councilman Turner. By statute, there are certain ordinances that require a public hearing to be held. Rezoning is one of those. So you saw that conducted earlier this evening prior to consideration of the rezoning later this evening on second reading. Other things that would require any type of zoning text amendment, such as the RE District that we'll be considering on first reading later this evening, then if that's approved on first reading, a public hearing would be established for that prior to second reading. Budget ordinances, budget amendments, those types of activities or those types of consideration of ordinances by the governing body require a public hearing by statute. But there are other ordinances that do not, and as I recall our agenda from last month, we had the home delivery beer amendments to the beer ordinance does not require a public hearing. Also, ordinance to several of our building codes, three, if I remember correctly, and those do not by statute require a public hearing. So we do follow what our requirements are in terms of public comment and that being afforded through a formally advertised public hearing.
Okay.
Mayor, I would like to add in, if I may. So we're proud of our opportunity to offer input from the public, and since I've been here a little bit longer than other City Council members, and quite a few years ago, we did not have comment on each item. It was during the public comment time that we expected public to make their comments. Then we did add for each agenda item, which I think has been pretty successful to offer that opportunity. Since we've been doing pandemic and COVID, that just became a lot harder to do. I think perhaps we just need to be sure we do a good job of communicating to the public that the time for comment on any of the ordinances that don't require public hearings during that particular meeting, that that's when we would like to entertain public comment and certainly welcome it. So, and greatly appreciate people who are paying attention and asking us, saying they want to have more opportunity. I think that's what our democracy is about, and appreciate your coming forward to bring it to our attention. Thank you.
Is there anyone else on the line?
That is all that we have in the queue, sir.
Okay, we'll move on to the next item. Appointments. There are no appointments to be made to boards or commissions this evening, so let's move on to the ordinances and resolutions. First item on our agenda is the first reading of ordinance 20-18, amending section 309 of the zoning ordinance as it relates to the established residential zoning district. Mr. Sora, would you please summarize ordinance 20-18?
Yes, Mayor, we're glad to. Our RE District, or what's referred to as the established residential neighborhood zoning designation, was originally adopted in 2009. Over the past several months, our planning staff, as well as our planning commission, have spent considerable amount of time reviewing the provisions guiding development in the RE District, specifically looking at the definitions that were included in that original draft or the original ordinance in 2009 in terms of the ambiguity of some of the. in terms of the ambiguity of some of the language that was there. So the effort to was, the effort by the staff and by the planning commission was to provide clarity in the interpretation of the existing language contained in the ordinance. Planning Commission concluded their work at their November 16th meeting and unanimously recommends the proposed revisions. They delve not only into the definitions, but also the interpretation of some of the language, but also they further drill down into some of the uses, both by special use permit and used by rights. At this time, I'm going to ask Sherith Young to address counsel on detailing the proposed revisions and then also speak somewhat to the to the question that Mr. Griffin had momentarily. This is an amendment to the zoning ordinance. Even though it's a tax amendment, so it will come back, if approved on first reading, it will come back next month, January 5th, with the consideration of second reading. But it will also, it will have a public hearing in advance of consideration on second reading.
Thank you, Mr. Sora. So as Mr. Sora said in his introduction, this is something that the planning commission has been hard at work on for some months now. The bullets that you see on your screen really detail and summarize the changes that are included in the proposal that you all have before you tonight. I won't read this list, but I will just summarize some of the bigger points that they made changes to, which were to update the purpose, to update the permitted use list and special use permit list, to clearly define the residential front facade and what constitutes the residential front facade for homes or structures in the RE district. And finally, the biggest concept here is probably to articulate the requirement of a build-to range, which is something that's new for this RE section in our zoning ordinance. So that's a build-to range for the front facade of the structure rather than what we typically refer to as a setback for structures in the district. So those are the changes in summary for this proposed ordinance, and I'll just walk through a couple of different screens here. And I'll just really kind of focus in on those big changes, but absolutely can go back and forth or slow down to different sections if you all have any questions or you'd like me to discuss something in more detail. So section A of the, of the, of section, section A of section 309 here, which is the RE district, is the purpose and applicability section. And this section was edited to be more concise and to be more clear and to be edited for any words that are ambiguous or might be vague or could be interpreted in different ways. So we really tried to drill down just to say that the intent of this district is to accommodate the development patterns of existing neighborhoods that meet the following criteria or conditions. And the criteria or conditions are the same as they are today in the zoning ordinance. And again, the RE district, if anyone is unfamiliar with it, applies to the Fairmount neighborhood, a portion of the Fairmount neighborhood, and then the area in and around Windsor Avenue. So definitely our older sections of town. Section B and section C are the permitted uses, special use permit list. The planning commission direction was to add public parks as a permitted use under the permitted uses section and to remove an item that was under the uses permitted by special use permits. And that use was sports clubs, swimming, tennis, or similar private sports clubs. So that use was removed from this draft. Section D remains unchanged from what is currently on the books. Section two under D is where you see the definition of the concept of a residential front facade. So here we tried to very clearly and concisely explain in number one and number two that the residential front facade is defined as the facade that faces a public street and that that residential front facade shall have an entryway. Item B, under number two, is specific to corner lot structure orientation. So if you're on a corner lot, the residential front facade for a corner lot is defined as that facade that faces the shortest side of the lot that faces on a public street. Under number three, and we'll kind of look at two different screens here. I've got an illustration on the next slide for you that I think makes a little more sense than maybe the, it's a little easier to look at than the language, I should say. But here's where we start to articulate the concept of a build-to range. So this section A is going to talk about the residential front facade. And if we go to the next slide, we'll see an illustration of this. So if you're looking at lots that are interior, so they don't, they're not on the corner, they just have the public street in front of the lot, your front yard, your build-to range is going to be defined by those structures beside of you. So you can build as close to the street as the closest adjacent structure. So here in this illustration, that's going to be the structure on the right. And you can build as far back, place your front facade as far back as the adjacent structure furthest from the road, furthest from the public street. So this is going to define the placement of the front facade if you're looking at an interior lot. We also have an item B, so this is going to talk about what happens if you're on a corner lot. And if we look at this illustration, the corner lot, the home structure built on the corner lot is not going to have an adjacent structure to go off of as we looked at with the interior lot. So here it's going to be defined as you can go as close as the closest adjacent structure. So that there's the structure on the lot to the right, and you can deviate from that five feet. So you can come back five feet from that plane and sight your front facade there if you wanted to come five feet back. So that's how we would address corner lots in this ordinance. On the next slide, here we go. Section C through G remain largely unchanged. Number four is unchanged, and I say largely unchanged if there were some minor edits, just slight word smoothing for clarity. We did make a couple of those, but there's no substantial change in that section. No change in section four. Number five, we just clarified, just edited a little so it read a little bit better. And then item E is new. So item E is going to address an existing structure that if it does not comply with the regulations of this section, it can be rebuilt within the same footprint if a building permit is issued for a replacement structure within two years. So if something would happen to a home, if it was, God forbid, burned down or something like that, it could be rebuilt within two years on the existing footprint, or it could certainly be rebuilt to comply with these regulations. So a person in that situation would have those options. And this final slide, this is the chart that concludes at the end of our residential chapter of the zoning ordinance. And this really just revises the section numbers. There were some edits that needed to be made here just to get everything to be correct in terms of the section numbering. So this is just a cleanup on this slide, but it is something that you will see in your packet as redlined, just where we are going to make those changes to clean it up. With that, I'd be happy to answer any questions about the ordinance or certainly go back to any section and talk about it more in depth, however you all would like.
Okay, does any member of council have any questions?
I'll just say that, Sherith, you mentioned that Planning Commission has been working on this quite a bit, and sometimes our meetings go two to three hours with a lot of discussion. But planning staff has done the heavy lift and done lots of work to get this and that's planning staff and don't want to leave out our attorney, Danielle Smith, for the work that's done. So thank y'all.
Okay, is there a motion to take action on this item?
Move to approve.
Take action on approving the information that's put forth this evening.
Ordinance 20-18, and I'll second that.
Okay, would any member of council like to discuss ordinance 20-18? Okay, here in nine, I believe we're ready for a vote. Tara, please call the roll.
Letrel?
Yes.
Turner? Turner?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. Fire Robin?
Yes.
King?
Yes.
And Power?
Yes.
Next item on the agenda is the first reading of ordinance 20-19, amending the city zoning map as it relates to property located at 837 Hill Street. Mr. Sora, would you please summarize ordinance 20-19?
Yes, Mayor, staff received a request for the rezoning of a property located at 837 Hill Street. The property is comprised of .18 acres. It's owned by Wallace Properties Management Group, LLC, and is currently zoned RE Established Residential. The owner requests the property to be rezoned to B1A Limited Business and Institutional. There's currently a residential structure located on the parcel. If the rezoning request is approved, the structure will be demolished and the parcel will be incorporated in the existing inventory parking area located at the corner of Hill Street and Ninth Street. The rezoning request was considered by the Planning Commission at their November 16th meeting and received a favorable recommendation. This issue, if approved on first reading, would be brought back for consideration on second reading during the January 5th meeting, and a public hearing is scheduled at that time. Sherith Young will detail the proposed rezoning along with the potential uses that could go there in addition to those proposed by the owner. Sherith?
Thank you. So I'll begin with a few maps again. Here is the property, which is shown in red on Hill Street. So this is 837 Hill Street. And my next map is going to show the zoning that is present in the area. So here at the corner of Hill and Ninth, you'll see two parcels that are zoned B1A. And if council remembers, this was rezoned about a year ago, 2019, November, I think it was. So this was a recent rezoning to B1A. And so the parcel request tonight is adjacent to those B1A parcels. The remainder of the area is zoned RE, which is in yellow, and then a long volunteer parkway, and then the existing gas station on the corner, and then the Wallace used car lot is zoned B3, which is our general business district. The next slide is going to show a photo. This is standing, looking at the existing home on Hill Street, followed by a photo which shows the rear of the home. So this photo is taken from the alley that runs between Hill and then the car lot that's adjacent to the alley here at the rear. This slide shows just the existing zoning and existing land use in the area. You do have some RE Established Residential Zone, which we saw in yellow on the zoning map. You have B3 to the north, which is the commercial land use for the used car lot. And then you do have B1A to the west, which is the parcels that were rezoned recently to the, they showed up in red on the map, and those are used commercially, but they're used as the inventory lot for Wallace. So that, those lots are gravel parking area currently today. This slide shows the RE permitted use list. So really, the permitted uses in the RE zone are single-family dwellings and duplexes. Special use permits include public or private utility buildings, churches, daycare centers, hospitals, philanthropic institutions and clubs, and then currently the private golf, swim, tennis clubs, sports clubs. B1A expands out the permitted uses list, somewhat like the B1B did in the King College rezoning we looked at before. And it expands to include some businesses that would serve the neighborhood. So you have some limited retail trade, some office and professional uses, some limited healthcare uses, full-service restaurants, limited personal laundry services, and then parking lots for permitted uses. The special use permit list is the same as it is in the RE zone. This map shows the future land use map projections for this area. So what you are going to see in red, a long volunteer parkway, that is a commercial land use for our future land use map. What is shown is in purple is a medium-density residential. And the parcel that we're looking at tonight is split between these two. But the policies of our future land use map say that in areas of transition such as this one, we are to consider all these land use classifications. And staff and planning commission discussion is that the B1A does provide a bit of a transition between the business district of the B3, the general business district, and then the neighborhood of the RE district. Public notification, we did place signs on the property notifying the public of this request. Also, adjacent property owners were notified by letter, and they included, the letter included a comment sheet, which they could return to us to let us know their feelings on the rezoning. We did receive two comment letters back. Both were in favor of the rezoning. And then we've received one telephone call thus far, just inquiring, curious, but didn't express any opposition or support for the rezoning. So due to the B1A zone on the adjacent parcels in agreement with the policies of the future land use plan and policy, staff requests city council approve this rezoning. The Planning Commission did take this up at their November 16th meeting, and they did vote unanimously to forward a favorable recommendation to city council for rezoning the property at 837 Hill Street. With that, I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Okay, any member of council have questions? Is there a motion to take action on this item?
Motion to approve.
Do you have a second?
A second.
Would any member of council like to discuss ordinance 20-19? Okay, I believe we're ready for a vote. Tara, please call the roll.
Letrel?
Yes.
Turner?
Yes.
Fire Robin?
Yes.
King?
Yes.
Power? Yes.
Okay, next item on the agenda is the second reading of ordinance 20-16, amending the city zoning map for property located at 1741 and 1745 King College Road. Staff summarized this issue during the public hearing this evening. Does any member of council have a question for the staff? Is there a motion to take action on this item?
Motion to approve ordinance 20-16.
That motion.
Would any member of council like to discuss ordinance 20-16?
I'll say this. I really appreciated Mr. Flynn's comments and Ms. Mark Torano. We know that mental health is so important as recognition of the need for for counseling for children at this point in time. I think it's very sad that Tennessee is lagging behind as far as mental health is concerned for our population. And I think that this will be a welcome addition to our community. So thank you to all that have worked so diligently to make this happen.
And I'll just thank you, Councilwoman Powers, and ditto the looking like it's a needed and good project. But also I will remind us that as we do our planning, et cetera, that we look at the whole picture of what's allowed in the zoning, not the use specifically unless it is a special use permit. So anyway, but I will happily support this rezoning. Thank you.
Well, and as we said at our last meeting, you know, I think we're all aware that the zoning follows the land and its uses follow the land, not the business that's making application. And I feel like it's been fully vetted. I think Chad, you've done a great job. And I feel like it's been fully vetted. I think Chad, you've done a great job in going out and researching. And I know I've heard from two or three different individuals. So I feel really good about this and realizing that, that the zoning will follow and moving forward. So, thank you.
Anyone else? Okay, the public had an opportunity to comment on this issue during the public hearing. So I believe we're ready for a vote. Tara, please call the roll.
Luttrell?
Yes.
Turner?
Yes.
Fire Robin?
Yes.
King?
Yes.
Power? Yes.
Next item on the agenda is the second reading of ordinance twenty dash seventeen, the abandoning and unopened portion of Leona Street as a public right of way. Mr. Sora, would you please summarize ordinance twenty dash seventeen?
This mayor, staff received a request from a Mr. Kenneth Dunn, owner of the property located at eight hundred East Mary Street and eight oh one Leona Street. He's seeking the abandonment of an unopened right of way which divides the two parcels. When Leona Street was originally platted in nineteen forty-three, it was platted as a, as a T shaped roadway. As you can see, the section to the north was never developed and remained unopened. So Leona Street really developed more in an L shape. Mister, as I mentioned, Mr. Dunn owns the property at eight hundred East Mary Street, which is to the left, and, and eight oh one Leona Street, which is to the right of the property. So this, this unopened right of way is totally enveloped by property owned by Mr. Dunn. Again, he's seeking the abandonment of this property so he can, he can combine the parcels and develop a, a single family residential structure on the property. I think Mr. Metzger is, is with us also this evening to, to add, add to this, this conversation and provide additional detail to this prior to council formally considering on second reading. David?
All right, thank you. As you can see by the map on your screens, as Mr. Sora had indicated, the properties that are owned by Mr. Dunn surround the proposed abandonment on three sides to the north, the west and the east. In the typical process that we use when looking at abandonment of public rights away, one of the things that we consider is the existence of existing utilities and the potential for future utilities. When we did the utility search on this particular proposal for right of way abandonment, the only the section on the southern fifteen feet of the right of way, which on the map on your screens is shown in the blue rectangle, contained any utilities which are overhead utilities. The rest of the right of way did not contain utilities and none of the public utility agencies expressed any interest in retaining a utility easement there, which would be our typical practice. So for this particular abandonment, staff is proposing that only utility easement be retained for the southernmost fifteen foot strip of the abandoned right of way, which is the blue rectangle on your map. The rest of it, no utility easement would be retained. This would allow Mr. Dunn to construct the single family residence that he desires at this particular site. If we retain those utilities, he would not be able to do so. As Mr. Sora said, this right of way dates back to nineteen forty-three, but it never been developed. Here's a photograph shown on your screen that was taken back in August. The right of way is shown where that bulldozer is parked. The person taking the photograph is standing where the two sections of the right of way meet. The southern part of Leona Street is behind a photographer and then the easternmost portion of Leona Street is to the right of the photographer. So this particular abandonment was considered by the Planning Commission at their October meeting and they voted unanimously to forward a favorable recommendation to city council. This would include the retention of the fifteen foot utility easement along the southern part of that right of way. This was considered for first reading by city council at their November meeting and was passed unanimously. This is not a ordinance that requires a public hearing. And since there's only one adjacent property owner that's actually has property that's touching this right of way, no additional public comment was sought at this time. So staff is recommending passage of this ordinance on second reading. Once that has, if that does pass this evening, once that becomes effective, a subdivision plat is in the process of being developed. That has to be completed before a building permit could be issued in order to construct the house at this location. So if you have any questions, I'll try to answer them as best I can.
Okay. Does any member of council have any questions? If not, is there a motion to take action on this item?
Move to approve.
You have a second?
Second to approve ordinance number twenty seventeen.
Thank you.
Yep.
Would any member of council like to discuss ordinance twenty day seventeen?
Sometimes it's hard to see those numbers.
Okay, Tara, I believe we're ready for a vote. Would you please call the roll?
Luttrell?
Yes.
Turner?
Yes.
Fire Robin?
Yes.
King?
Yes.
Power?
Yes.
Next we have resolution twenty dash one one one, endorsing the tri cities joint legislative policy for the twenty twenty-one session of the Tennessee General Assembly. Mr. Sora, would you please summarize this matter for the public?
Yes, mayor, as council is aware, legislative policy has been jointly developed to provide a unified position regarding key legislative initiatives affecting the communities of Bristol, Kingsport and Johnson City. We discussed the, the, this year's legislative policy or legislative agenda in depth during our work session on the twenty-fourth of November. As council will recall, we've got eight subject areas and sixteen policies objection, objections, objectives within each of those subject areas. They include emergency powers, urban growth and planning, education funding, local revenue, public safety and health, public transportation, and an administration element dealing with electronic open meetings. I don't, I don't think I'll go into the details certainly that I went into during the work session, but if council has, has any questions on any of the items within this, this policy document, I'd be glad to expand on those. I would also point out that the cities of Kingsport and Johnson City will be reviewing this document and considering it formally during the month of December. Any item that's not approved unanimously by the three, not unanimous by unanimous vote, but approved by each of the three governing bodies would be removed from the, from the policy document prior to, to its submittal to our legislative delegation.
I think that's, that's some, I guess, one of the questions I have of looking at over this of, you know, there's a couple of things that I guess myself I do not agree with. And should we as council of, if one of us wants to have one of these removed from this document before we vote on it, do we need to do that now? Or just not a no vote for the entire document because of like, for instance, the emergency powers, you know, we've talked about that. I do not agree with that section of it. So that, for me, that section would be a no. And then, you know, on the, the other of the local revenue on the taxes, a lot of that would be of, I guess, if the time comes that there was the need and what that revenue, revenue would be used for, could possibly look at some of those, but how would we? How, how should we handle this? I guess the one I have a very strong opinion about and the others, I could, you know, I'd be willing to look at those, but how should we handle this?
I think what I would suggest, and, and this isn't the first time this, this has occurred. There's, there's, it's not unusual for one or more objectives within a, a, a policy document such as this to, to, to have, to not be universally adopted by an individual governing body. What I would suggest is if there's, if there's a particular one, like, like the emergency powers, a House Bill, House Bill seven, if there, if there is a desire by the majority of council to remove that, then I, then I, I think that's, that would be the appropriate way to do that. If there's not a, a desire by the majority of council to remove it, an individual council member still could vote in opposition to, to approving the document as, as a whole. So there's a couple of different ways to look at it. And I would suggest council talk that through. And if there are, are, you know, if House Bill seven is a concern or if there are other elements of the policy that are a concern, I think it's very much, very appropriate. This is your policy document. So it's very appropriate to talk it through. If, if a majority of council would like to have one or more of these objectives removed from the legislative policy, then that's appropriate to do so.
So Mr. Sora, could you maybe address the two issues that Councilman Turner brought up to?
House Bill seven was, is sponsored by Representative Zachary from Knox County. And, and it deals with issues that, that, that have centered around Knox County in a relationship there with their metro health department and, and the county mayor and the desire. The, the way the, the, this, the way the metro counties are governed right now, the health director does have the ability to declare a public health emergency. And this could be for certainly the pandemic we're in right now, but it also could be for other health related issues such as, as polio or tuberculosis, tuberculosis or other types of, of easily, easily spread disease. That this gives the count, the chief medical director for the metro health department, the ability to declare a public health emergency and then take what action that is deemed appropriate. Under House Bill seven, that would remove that authority, vest that authority with the county mayor. But the, the legislation does say that, that certainly there would be consultation about decisions to be made moving forward with the, with the health department officials. But, but, but the ultimate authority to make that decision would be vested with the, with the county mayor in that metro health department. And those, that differs from the other eighty-nine that, that's, that's under, under the Tennessee Department of Health. And I think all of you are aware of the health department structure that we have with the six metro departments and Sullivan County being one of those.
So for the other eighty-nine, the state health department has that authority?
That, that is correct. Now, the mayor, the mayors will have only that authority that is granted to them by the governor. And you may recall through executive order, the governor has provided the authority to issue mask mandates. For example, in the eighty-nine, the, the governors and the, the, the mayors or the health department directors in the metro departments have that authority already.
Do you want to address the other one that Mr. Turner brought up?
And, and I, I think those had to do with, with local revenue. I think what I would say with, with any of those is especially those that we lack the statutory authority to move forward with. What we're asking for is the ability to do what really some of our neighbors, neighboring states have the ability to do. Any action to actually implement that, that particular revenue stream would require an action by the local governing body. And, and certainly the, the debate and the vetting of that, of that question would take place at that time for any, for any governing body. And if, the one that, one that typically jumps out is the, is the prepared meal tax. And, you know, like we said, there are, that tax is levied by a number of the states around us. It's also levied by Sevier County and the cities, the municipalities within Sevier County. The balance of the, of the state of Tennessee does not have that ability to do that. And what this ask is for, from Sullivan County to Shelby County, that that decision be left to the local governing bodies and those officials that are elected to represent them within those governing bodies. They would make that decision regarding whether to implement a, a prepared meals tax or something of that nature. Is that, does that answer, answer your question, Councilman Turner?
Yes. I guess just to be clear on the, or go ahead, Chad.
Well, I was, we've kind of done this every year of the last several years. And, and I'll tell you, I'm, I'm kind of like you are, Vince, there are a few things that I, that I don't totally agree with. It's kind of like our budget process. There were several things that I didn't specifically agree with in the budget, but the brunt of it and, you know, ninety-five, ninety-eight percent of it I agreed with. So I voted for the overall budget because I agreed with almost everything in it. I kind of take the same thing with this, with this joint legislative policy agreement. You know, I'm, I'm kind of like you are with that particular part that was just put in about removing the, having the mayor make the decision versus the health department. For me on that, I'm not sure which one of those is, is correct. I have seen in other areas of the country, probably within our state, you have a governor or a mayor that makes an opinion on something that I don't agree with. And I'm sure it's happened with the health department. Our health department here, I think, has done a great job in Sullivan County. And you could have the same thing happen with a, a health official, you know, within the state of Tennessee. You may have a health official that, that does something that the brunt of the commissioners, for instance, or mayor may not, may not agree with. That backup there is, is that they can remove that person from, from their job. And, and then, you know, pick up, pick up from there. I, I almost kind of think it's kind of, the mayor in this particular instance is kind of a, a catchall. Mayor and the commissioners are kind of a catchall in a situation like this. I, I heard it said that, you know, in some cases that mayors and elected officials don't want to make decisions like this. And for me, that is a weak leader that can't make a decision based off something like this. You have to make a decision in, in tough times like this. I really feel that in this particular issue, city council really did a good thing back when this first came about in, in March and April, where we said, you know, if we have to make a spur of the moment decision immediately, then, you know, the mayor, city manager could make that decision, but within seventy-two hours, that, that needs to become in front of city council, discussed and make sure that, you know, we're, our checks and balances are there for that. So for me, I, I don't necessarily agree with either, either side of that. I'd like to see more of a, more of discussion amongst elected officials and staff, but one side is political and the other side is bureaucratic. I don't really like either way, to be honest with you. You know, the one thing that I, that I want to do, I know that our mayor, Sullivan County mayor is, has asked us to advocate against this legislation. And he feels it's the best thing. So I, I want to go in that direction to, to show support for our mayor of Sullivan County where it's revendable. So, I mean, and, and you mentioned something about, you know, taxes, meals tax and things of that nature. I'm not for a meals tax either, but, you know, there are certain instances where you must raise money in some form or fashion. And I believe that if you have to raise money for a school, for instance, I would much rather base that off consumption and not off the property that you own. I believe that it's wrong to raise property taxes when you can base something off of consumption. So, you know, I don't necessarily agree with, with, with a few things like you do, but overall I, I agree with the policy. So in my view, you know, as, as, as our council, I think we should probably go ahead and pass this. If we were to reject the entire policy, then it goes back, you know, to, to Johnson City, Kingsport and, and to be re-vetted. And so that's, that's kind of been my take on it. And.
Yeah, and that's the same way with it. When we were talking about the meals thing, and I said that if, that would be something I could look at. And I just was making that comment of that section of it. I feel like the emergency powers and, you know, it may be the fact of that, listen, we are elected officials by the people and I feel like that that's what, sometimes we do have to make decisions that are not, you know, they're not popular, but that's why, what we're here to do. And I don't think that it should be, you know, put off on someone else to make those decisions. I think that we need to make those decisions. So that's the reason. I'm being against you. I'm sorry, Lee, go ahead.
Well, all I was going to say is I feel pretty much the same way in regard to House Bill seven. I think that when you talk about the public health as we have gone through this, and albeit I'm not a public health official, but, you know, there we started out and it was all about fiscal health. And it was that we needed to shut down and to do this and to do that and some other things. We now know that it's also about the mental health, the emotional state, that we we know that there's been increased fiscal and emotional abuse. We know that there has been food fragility created because of the shutdown of the economy and people losing their jobs. So we've got fiscal house health, we've got mental, psychological, emotional health, and then we've got the socioeconomic health. And as we've looked at this, yes, this has been, this has been huge. I mean, it's just been devastating to so many, the loss of life, the loss of of ability to earn a living, which greatly impacts life. What it's done with and to many of our children that we probably won't know the consequences of for years to come. So so who makes that decision as to exactly how we work our way through that? Well, I think we've been very fortunate here under these circumstances that while the decision, there was the authority for the decision to be made as it was, it was a very collaborative effort. There was a lot of discussion. There were, there were a lot of meetings back and forth. And I too agree that that there doesn't seem to be any one singular perfect path forward. But I think we have to be very careful when we begin to take the decision-making away from the people. And about that, the people have a voice through their elected officials. Elections have consequences, they have outcomes. And I think it's just, I think it's incredibly important that we we are mindful of that, that that we we have civil liberties that over the past twenty years we have knowingly and unknowingly let let go of little by little. And while this on the front end may not look like something that would require the thought, I think, that many of us have put into it, I think in years to come, it's just like that land out on King College Road. The zoning follows the land, it doesn't follow whoever owns it, whomever owns it. And in this situation, the legislation, the legislation doesn't follow the people that are necessarily in office that have provided us with a very positive outcome to the, well, as good of an outcome as could possibly be had during the pandemic. You know, we don't know who's going to be sitting in these seats in the future. And so so is the legislation going to be our best path forward regardless of who is sitting in the seat? You know, and I think that in a republic, that we err on the side of the people and on the side of the people's voice. So I just, I just feel very strongly. And and if someone doesn't feel comfortable making that that decision, well, I get it in that they may say, well, you know, I'm not, I'm not the one that is educated in public health specifically. But as we now know, in these decisions, there are so many other issues that come into play along with the overarching issue of public health. And what is public health? Is it the fiscal health, the mental and emotional? Does socioeconomic play into that?
I'm sorry.
So, you know, the legislation is what it is. Do we start taking all this apart? I'm not going to ask that that take place, but I think we have to be mindful that and yes, the mayor has the right to dismiss the public health official. But if we're not strong enough to just make the decision as an elected official after collaboration and seeking the advice of the science as well as the economist and everyone else to be involved. And I'm not saying to put anything above human life, but I am saying that there's a balance here. I just think we need to be be mindful of the people's voice. And the people's voice is through the elected official.
And I'll just add to that, that, you know, in part of this, this is a policy issue with me, not a personal issue with anyone that's in office now. Or I think just going back to what you said, is this is a policy issue. And, you know, I would, I would actually like this section of it. I would like to see removed. I mean, I'd make a motion to have this removed from our legislative policy, so.
I think all this dialogue, it's really been good. We all always have decisions that we all need to make. My concern is that throughout our entire landscape of Tennessee and and the country, you know, there's been too much politicized on this matter. I think as a country, we could have been farther along if, you know, we we had let the the data speak for itself. So therefore, I I would be opposed to taking any of this out of the legislative agenda and like to move forward as it is.
I think there is a motion on the floor, whether it receives a second or not.
Oh, I'm sorry.
That's, that's okay. I'm just stepping in before Danielle does or before our attorney does.
Well, do you have an opinion on this, Margaret?
Yeah, I mean, which I I support leaving it in. And I would, and I think Councilwoman Powers answered or said it herself, but public health does include mental health, it does include overall health. So and I think if we were starting over right now, our country hasn't had a pandemic since nineteen eighteen. So we've learned a lot during this time period. So anyway, I I feel like the better path is how it's stated in our with opposing the changes to the to the legislation.
Well, and I do understand what Vince is saying. I I'm very conflicted over this, but I'm not going to ask that it be removed. I just think that I just think that we have got to, as things come to us, I would appreciate the drill down and the conversation and to be very, and I think we are, but but to continue on to be very thoughtful to the multiple issues at hand. Yes, Margaret, it is the fiscal and the mental health. But many people are suffering right now because of the socioeconomic part of all of this. And our, while our positive testing is going up, my understanding is that as of last Wednesday, if I'm correct, Tennessee was fifth in the nation as far as being hot states for this. And that Sullivan County at that point in time was the first in the state for being a hot, hot point for all of this. I get all that, but, you know, it concerns me to think that that at times people aren't thought to be intelligent enough to make decisions for themselves and that things are going to have to be forced on them. I I think that's stepping away from from who we are as a people. And I just, I just want us to be mindful of that.
I mean, I'll I'll agree with that as well, Lee. Again, I I don't, you know, the legislation for me doesn't fit on either side. You know, by by healthcare professional versus a mayor, it's an individual. The problem that I have, it's an individual that makes that decision, that that person. So I'm with you on that. I mean, I I feel that that probably that, you know, in this particular case, if the commission or council or or alderman or whoever, whatever the case may be, could step up for the people and overturn a mayor or a healthcare professional, in my view. So.
You know, I guess it's it's the fact that the legislation is just so one way or the other.
Right.
I think that it would have been helpful if the legislation had been written so that there's a defined process that of collaboration that that insisted that public health officials are at the table. This person, that person of expertise are at the table, that there's a team put to the table and that there's the collaboration of information to then determine the path forward and the outcome with that being spoken from. Now, as it is, you know, you can say, oh, well, that we do that, and that's what happens. Yes, that's what we have done. But I think that it's, that's not what everybody does. It does become politicized, male and to your point, unfortunately. And then it does become entrenched in bureaucracy. And or it can, it hasn't here, but it can. And if you're talking about state legislation, I think you've got, that's the problem I have with this, is that it's it's either one way or the other, and it doesn't define the need for the collaboration from the multiple sources of expertise. So I'm not going to ask that it be pulled out. You know, but I think it's important for us to still continue to think about that.
Well said, and I agree with that.
I withdraw the motion of removing it. But I think the thing that we need to also think about that, you know, policy outlasts any office holder. And so I'll go along and support the rest of the legislation. And just make it noted that that's a section that I do not support. But I will go ahead and vote for the rest of it.
And I'll jump right in here, if y'all don't mind, with one last word about the whole local revenue situation, is that we are totally relying on property tax and sales tax. And I don't think there's anyone that wants to incur taxes just for the sake of incurring taxes. I do think that it's important that we have options available to us at the local level. You know, when I first came on to council, uh, uh, seven years ago now, and I know, Margaret, you've been here longer than I have, but it's important to note that at that point in time, it seemed that the state was taking more and more and more control away from the local entities. And I think that any time that we can have options and authority returned to the local, the local governments or the local public servants that are elected as officials, they, we are the first touch of government. We are the touch of government regardless if it's the five of us sitting here today or five in ten years or the ten that were, five that were here ten years ago. And we need to have as many options as possible at the local level. And and because we don't want to come up short one day and say, oh, my gosh, now what are we going to do? You know, and and to the point about the the food and beverage tax, the meals tax, I'm not advocating for that today. But, you know, if we could, as Chad spoke, through a consumption tax, where it's our choice whether we want to go out and spend that or not. You know, if we if we need to build new schools, but we don't have the revenues, you know, we can, we've got something else that we can draw from if we are so pressed. That's not where we are today, but I think it's incredibly important that we have that in our pocket of options.
Yeah, I absolutely agree with that, Lee, that, you know, that that's a great option going forward if we need it. Like you said, it's 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 something we're not saying we want it today, by no means. And and, you know, it it puts us on equal footing with other areas across Tennessee. And that's that's something that's, you know, been concerning to me for some time is that, you know, everyone is, every county, every city is not equal in the state. So I think that just puts us another step forward.
And to be clear, my advocacy is only for the local control to make the decisions that would directly impact the people that live within our jurisdiction. And I I think I think that it's just incredibly important that we have that local control.
Yes, agree.
Well, that was kind of what I was saying of the fact that of on a case-by-case basis, of just not, just making a statement that, um, yes, I agree with everything in this document that we have here. So and not going one way or the other on that, so. All right, moving on. I withdrew my motion, so.
So, Mr. Mayor, do you need a motion for approval?
Yes, we do.
Let's see, we, so we had a lot of discussion before we had a motion on the floor, which I think works fine. I'll motion to approve the Resolution twenty-one-one-one, our tri-city's legislative policy for twenty-twenty-one.
I'll second that.
Okay, I'm going to ask, does any member of council like to discuss twenty-one-one-one?
I'll just say that we, as Mr. Sora said, we've been doing this a long time. And this certainly is regional working together and cooperation and trying to come with a united voice. So thanks to all who work every year to make this happen.
Absolutely. Okay, Tara, we're ready for a vote. Please call the roll.
Letrow?
Yes.
Turner?
Yes.
Fire Robin?
Yes.
King?
Yes.
Powers?
Yes.
Okay, this brings us to our consent agenda. Mr. Sora, do you please read the items on tonight's consent agenda?
This, Mayor, we have the minutes of our November tenth, twenty-twenty City Council meeting. We have the minutes from our November twenty-fourth, twenty-twenty City Council work session. We have Resolution twenty-one-twelve authorizing the purchase of patrol-rated sport utility vehicles and Resolution twenty-one-thirteen approving the allocation of community development block grant coronavirus funds, round three.
Okay, would any member of council like any item to be removed from the consent agenda? Hearing none, to have a motion to approve the items included in the consent agenda.
Move to approve.
Second.
Okay, Tara, please call the roll.
Letrow?
Yes.
Turner?
Yes.
Fire Robin?
Yes.
King?
Yes.
Powers?
Yes.
Okay, this moves us on to the next part of the tonight's meeting. It's it's one, it's always a pleasure to hear from Dr. Tudor to give us a update on what's going on in the school system.
Good evening, everyone. Can you all hear me okay?
Yeah.
Yes.
Good to see you all remotely. I just have a few things, I won't keep you very long. I just want to draw attention to that we are seeking Tennessee Promise mentors for our high school seniors. If you'll recall, that's a statewide initiative to support our seniors as they transition to post-secondary. In particular, if they're looking to transition to a two-year community college experience, mentors are needed to support those seniors in the calendar year of twenty-twenty-one. And Sullivan County, we have not met our goal. And in all school districts, actually, not just Bristol City Schools, but also Kingsport and Sullivan County. And so we're seeking those mentors for our seniors. The commitment is minimal, it's about ten to fifteen hours for the entire year. And this year, all of that mentoring is going to happen virtually through a virtual platform that the Tennessee Achieves organization has established. So there shouldn't be safety concerns related to COVID. So if you know of folks who are interested in that, no experience necessary, they handle all of the preparation. It's really just seeking adult mentors to help some seniors maybe navigate situations that they've never been exposed to before in terms of applying to schools or even doing community service hours as as part of that expectation. So if you know of folks interested in that, So if you know of folks interested in that, they can go to tennesseeachieves.org and sign up to be a mentor completely voluntary. We appreciate that support for our high school seniors. This week, our, actually at Tennessee High School and Tennessee Online Public School, our students are participating in our end of course exams for first semester. It seems like, seems like we'd never get to this point, but yet it's gone so quickly as well. So our high school seniors are completing their first semester courses. Also wanted to give a little shout out to some of the things happening at Tennessee Online Public Schools. You know, that's our online high school that we've had in existence since, um, twenty thirteen, I think, or twenty twelve. We, uh, have a new principal this year who's been very innovative in adding some things. He's worked very closely with Deidre Penley, our CTE director at Tennessee High School. And so we're adding some CTE options in that virtual environment, which is great for those students across the state. Mr. Humphrey has also added esports as a club at this point to this, for the students at Tennessee Online Public School. And he's reached out to both King University and East Tennessee State University and has coordinated with them in terms of that program that's at the university level. So that's an exciting adventure for us. And, um, as you know, TOPS has been a three-year reward school based on their academic excellence. And so as, as a way to promote that across the state, we'll be applying to, um, be a course access provider. There's a new opportunity at the state level where we can apply to, um, be able to offer our courses statewide, single-ten, so that, um, students don't necessarily have to enroll full-time in TOPS, but can take a course here and there if they're in a rural environment, for instance, and they don't have some of the courses that we have at TOPS, then they could take them through our school and transfer that credit to their high school. So just more access for students across the state in this virtual environment. And then finally, I'd just like to, um, we're coming, as I said, close to the end of our first semester. You all know as well as I do what a challenging, um, semester this has been for, for all of our stakeholders, our students for sure, our staff, and certainly our families navigating what education and learning and instruction looks like in the semester. So I would just like to extend my appreciation to our families in the Bristol community, certainly our students, and of course, all of our staff, our teachers and our support staff and our administrators who've really just worked tirelessly to make this as successful as possible and the best experience for our students as possible, given our circumstances. So I just wanted to publicly acknowledge their work and, um, appreciate our families for their patience and their diligence and hanging in there with us. And hopefully we can weather the storm and have a great second semester. Do you all have any questions for me?
When's the new school going to open?
The new school is going to open in August. We actually, like I said, last month at the last meeting, we've opened our gym and we were supposed to have our first basketball game, um, yesterday, actually, in that environment. And the, the opposing school had to pull out for COVID reasons. And so we've not actually played, uh, an actual game in there, but our students are using that facility. And with instruction, our, we have, uh, obviously our PE classes, but also our band and our chorus are using that facility. So that's been a great, um, teaser for what the new building is going to look like. And if you've been around the campus at all lately, you've seen that we're, we're pretty dried in, which is exciting. You won't see much progress anymore because it'll all be kind of internal. But, um, there's still obviously some things to be done outside, but really exciting. We're, we're working on the finishing touches now and ordering furniture and flooring and colors and paint and that kind of thing. So we're making progress and we'll be in there in August.
That's great. I drive by periodically just looking at it and it's just amazing. You know, the progress that's been made over the last little while. So, good job.
Our community. Thank you for your support.
Okay, city manager's report.
Mayor, I'll be very brief and just remind council of, of some other meetings, um, that we have during the month of December. Remind council tomorrow, we have our home builders forum at eleven thirty in the gymnasium at Slater Center. Also on Thursday, December third, Tennessee Municipal League will have their district one virtual meeting, uh, at ten AM. That you've, you should have received invitations from TML. You will need to make a reservation, um, to, to get your Zoom invitation for that activity on Thursday. On Wednesday, December ninth, Network Sullivan Partnership will meet. And, uh, I am, uh, almost positive that's going to be a virtual meeting. Councilman Turner, as I get an invitation, I'll forward this to you. So you've got an option to attend that meeting should you desire. And then, uh, then two weeks from, from today, on December fifteenth, we'll have our work session at eleven AM and that will be conducted virtually. That's it.
Okay, council comments? Uh, just, just to clarify, you said we do need to, I had that on my, the TML, was that the TML district one meeting you were talking about?
Yes, it was, Council McKean. And I, you, I'm sure you, you sent, you have seen something, uh, in an email from Tennessee Municipal League. I have sent, I have forwarded that, um, the, the link to that or the email invitation to each of you. I think, uh, I probably last did that yesterday and I did it also a couple of weeks ago. But within that, um, that email, uh, there's an option to, to, to make your reservation. Once you do, once you get that, you'll get a, you'll get a Zoom invitation from Tennessee Municipal.
Okay, I've got it in my calendar twice, so I do see where I now have the Zoom invite and the Zoom link to it.
And if, if you find you need anything else, please let me know and I'll be glad to send you that email.
Okay, there's also a legislative briefing, I think, that maybe the chamber is going to be, uh, having at eleven o'clock. I think that's the Chamber of Commerce that day as well. So that might be something interesting. And yeah, okay, uh, yeah, I, I just wanted to, we had a pretty long work session, so I didn't get to mention this. Uh, but, um, I think under the circumstances, uh, you know, the, the National League of Cities had some fairly decent training sessions. That probably wasn't as good as being live and, and, uh, but a couple of things that I picked upon, um, future work, workforce trends and homeless things, uh, things about the homeless. But one of the things that I just wanted to mention tonight was one of the, one of the business sectors that's really hurting throughout the entire country is our restaurants. And, um, one of the, one of the training sessions, and I don't know if anybody else caught this or not, was, uh, handled by a guy, a guy named, uh, Mike Watley from the National Restaurant Association. And he gave a lot of numbers through, um, you know, what was happening nationwide. And I don't want to really get into it in depth, but, uh, you know, nationally, about a sixth of all the restaurants have closed, uh, which I thought was an astounding number. I don't think we're anywhere close to that, uh, here in Bristol, but we have restaurants that have closed. Fortunately, we also have restaurants, or at least one restaurant that I know, that's going to be expanding. So that's, that's, that's good news. But one of the things that they, um, mentioned, um, and another statistics they threw out is that right now forty-four percent of all the dining is done outside. So, you know, we have, um, kind of, uh, tried to move in that direction. Prior to COVID, kind of moved in the direction of, of trying to help, you know, uh, uh, push things along towards outdoor dining, especially in smaller restaurants where they can expand their tables. So I'd like for us to think, uh, a little bit about some of the suggestions that they had, um, going forward to help our restaurants, uh, especially when we get into the springtime, planning now and maybe, maybe really looking at this towards the springtime. Uh, and some of the things that they suggested was that, you know, that the city would, uh, in many areas, the city was supplying the tables themselves, tables and chairs themselves. Uh, that they were supplying tents, that they were, um, uh, putting, uh, spots up, umbrellas up. That really brings noticeable, brings, um, it makes the, the restaurant areas noticeable. You know, doorways, um, coordinate food truck days in certain areas. Uh, outdoor heaters were several of the things that were mentioned that they were doing to, uh, you know, to try to help restaurants in that respect. And so, um, you know, I'd kind of like us all to kind of think about that. And, and, uh, we've got some, you know, uh, Terry and, and, uh, uh, you know, Terry's got a lot of good ideas, Terry Napier, and, and, uh, Tom has, has talked to several of our restaurants downtown and we, I'm sure we all have talked to, you know, a few of them as well. And I think it'd be a good idea for all of us to, you know, talk with our restaurants and say, what can we do to help you? And, um, it's going to be a tough, you know, next three or four months. Uh, but hopefully when we get into, uh, you know, the springtime, that we can do some things that will really enhance that outdoor dining for our restaurants. So I'd just like for us all to think about that and start putting together some notes and just see what everybody comes up with and ask questions, um, from those owners. Uh, and there's, there's other business sectors that are, that are hurting as well. Uh, you know, one of the first things that goes is advertising. You know, when you're, um, in situations like this, recessionary or in this case, COVID, health-related. So there's a lot of business sectors that are hurting, but I do see that, you know, that the city can make some steps, positive steps going forward that may be able to help, um, our restaurants. That's all I've got.
I'll jump in. Yeah, today is Giving Tuesday. And so I know a lot of our nonprofits have, uh, put out a lot of information about, you know, their needs and hoping that, that there'll, uh, be contributions to come that, their way in this season of giving. Believe in Bristol is still very involved downtown and encouraging everyone to shop, uh, downtown and to shop locally and, uh, especially with the Christmas season. The Christmas season is so important to our retailers because for many, it's a make or break of the year. And those that are hanging on, uh, at this point in time, it, it could mean whether or not they continue to, to be with us in the coming new year. January and February is, is just for retail, it's such a hard time of year. The weather's uncooperative, you know, uh, and especially with COVID right now. And so as we move through the holiday season and on into the new year, I hope that we'll all remember to, to shop local. Bristol Rhythm and Roots, uh, tickets went on sale Friday. The BCM has launched, uh, their end of year COVID giving. Without the festival, there has been, as you all heard in the work session, a loss of revenues there that, that, uh, are trying to be regained in some capacity to see us through, uh, as a community into, uh, twenty twenty-one. A shout out to our police department. And, uh, this time when, uh, we hear a lot about our police and, and, uh, different movements regarding our police, I'm very proud to say, uh, that our, uh, police force, uh, is simply outstanding. They have done a great job to win the, uh, Kalia Award for the eighth year in a row is, is something, something very special. Our planning department continues to just really knock it out of the ballpark. There's a lot that's going on that people may or may not be aware of, but our planning department continues to, to move forward. I'd also like to, uh, give a shout out to, um, our management team for these meetings, Shane Barney and John Luttrell. They keep us on track and do a great job. And, um, I'm very thankful for our staff this time of year, for our school system, Dr. Tudor. I know y'all have risen to the occasion many times. And, and I'd really like to say that I'm, I'm very appreciative and thankful to serve with this council. Uh, Maelyn has stepped up and done a wonderful job as mayor and, and Vence as vice mayor. And of course, Margaret and Chad, it's a pleasure to serve with all of you. And so to, to all watching and to all, all present, I wish each of you a very Merry Christmas and, and blessings in the coming year. Stay safe, wear your mask, wash your hands and don't get near anybody. Merry Christmas.
Yeah, I guess I was just going to say, uh, Merry Christmas to everyone because I guess this is, uh, less meeting until the new year and also Happy New Year and, uh, let's hope twenty twenty-one is, uh, we can get rid of twenty twenty and, uh, move on. So, um, that's all I've got.
Uh, and I can go ahead and go. And just a reminder, we do have our work session, so we still have opportunity and people may tune in for some of that, um, time with us as well. But, um, I, I wanted to also talk about our staff and note the police accreditation. And I just, in, um, paying attention to what's going on across our country, wonder how many, uh, I have not looked up for some of the departments that have had some, some problems whether they're accredited. I think going through that process is tremendous. And certainly offers professionalism and training that perhaps some other, um, police departments don't have and don't get. So appreciate that we began that quite a few years ago, that it continues. And, uh, as we take part in that, that we pass with flying colors. So, um, Chief Wade, please express to all your department, um, that we are very proud. And, uh, also the recognitions of, uh, the police officers with our, uh, Bristol First Award. We note that several of those are part of our police service. I also wanted also just, uh, staff, um, teachers, our essential workers, our safety folks, our folks who are working the grocery stores and the drugstores and the places that we have to go, um, and don't have a choice to do. Just really appreciate everybody who is, uh, continues to work in those areas. Health department is stretched beyond, beyond their, um, capacity, but keep, uh, working and providing exceptional service. And for all that, and particularly with our staff, I think we expect a lot. We always have our motto of being the, uh, providing the best in municipal services. I think we get more than what we even expect. But I also challenge us all for our staff, for each other, et cetera, to, uh, provide, um, understanding and to provide grace for us all to, um, to not be as productive as we might normally be for not being able to have the positive attitudes we might usually have, et cetera. So just appreciation for everybody and, um, I'll wait and say Merry Christmas at our work session. So, thank you.
I, I don't know that there's much more I can add to what everyone said, but I will anyway.
Right.
You know, it, it's truly a pleasure and honor to work with such a talented staff as we have in the city of Bristol, Tennessee. From, uh, city manager all the way down to, you know, the folks that go out and maintain our, our parks. Everyone is so dedicated and so professional. And, uh, you know, everyone has this can-do attitude. And any, any project that we've thrown out there, uh, any challenge, I mean, they, they beat it. Everyone meets it. And I'm just so thankful for that. And, uh, this weekend, I had the pleasure of talking with some healthcare officials. You know, they're, they're, they're really stressed. And everything that we can do to help, you know, mitigate this, this virus and slow it down until the vaccine is, is delivered, uh, we all owe it to our community to do all we can in support of them. And, uh, with that, um, I'll say good night and this meeting is adjourned.